Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting to order. Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our television channel, Breezeline Channel seven and High Definition Channel 507. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on tonight's agenda. We acknowledge your participation and by attending you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken in as limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up on the, at the information table out in the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the Commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led into Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. So our agenda for today's meeting, April 23rd, along with the regular session minutes, the closed session minutes from our April 9th meeting have been circulated for review. And in addition to those, we have circulated our budget workshop meeting minutes from April 11th. Any additions or corrections?
None. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Second?
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
All right, thank you Commissioners. So we just had a closed session under the General Provisions Article Section 3305B1 to discuss boards and commissions. And I believe we did have one appointment to make this evening.
Uh, I move to reappoint Eric Hoffman to fill the vacancy on the Travel and Tourism Advisory Committee. This term will expire on March 31st, 31st of 2027. Second?
You have a motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Okay, looks like we have a few members of the public have signed up. So next we have press and public comment. So we appreciate all citizens for taking the time to express views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest. And in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
Nancy Scarsesi, good to see you.
Good evening Commissioners, Nancy Scarsari, Land Planning Consultant. I'm here tonight mostly to thank you for your support in building trails and to thank you in advance for recognizing Celebrate Trails Day, which is this Saturday, April 27th. As a member of the Eastern Shore Regional Steering, Trail Steering Committee, where we want to let everybody know that there's multiple events and celebrations taking place across the eastern shore. So hope everyone can grab a bike, stroller, whatever it is you do, and get out on the trails this weekend and enjoy them. If you're not familiar with the Eastern Shore Regional Trail Network, it's a group of people across the shore that's trying to make a regional network connect to every county and including Delaware and Virginia. So we have people from MDOT, from State Highway, from the State BPAC, all representing counties. And we have all the counties conglomerately. And we have currently a National Park Service grant that we're working to roll out and kind of brand the whole Eastern Shore Regional Trail idea and initiative. There's a survey that'll be available online as well as a QR code that says a little bit more about what's going on. I've sent that to Director Steve Shanley, so I'm sure it'll be made public, you know, through social media and also encourage everyone to take that. And I couldn't, yeah, I'd just like to say I couldn't be prouder of being part of the trail system here, getting developed in Queen Anne's County as well as some other counties in Maryland. So yeah, everybody just get out and enjoy the trails. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy was the only one to sign up, but anybody else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the press and public comment.
All right Commissioners, next on our agenda is the swearing in ceremony for Executive Assistant Ms. Stephanie Gerald.
All right, so a lot of people don't know this, Stephanie, which is going to be taking Margie Howe's place in our chamber. And you know, Margie has been here for
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three years, thirty-three years. So Stephanie's got a, you know, a track record, she's got big shoes to fill, she's up for the challenge, we're excited to have her and thank you for, you know, putting your, your, your out there for us, so, you know. So Stephanie, if you please stand, and you're gonna raise your right hand, you're gonna repeat after me. I, Jim Moran, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Stephanie Gerald, say one more time.
I, Jim Moran, do swear
I, Stephanie Gerald, do swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution and laws of this state
And support the Constitution and laws of this state
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partial, partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of Executive Assistant
Execute the office of Executive Assistant
To the county commissioners for Queen Anne's County
To the county commissioners for Queen Anne's County
According to the Constitution and laws of the state
According to the Constitution and laws of the state
Congratulations. Awesome, good to meet you.
She would have never made it through without you.
Yeah.
Good job.
So, and I see your husband's hiding in the back?
Yes.
Thank you.
You gotta stand up, you have to stand up.
Yeah. Alrighty.
All right, now that that's official, we can call security and have Margie escorted out.
She said she doesn't need the escort, she was running anyways.
Just too many years with Jim Moran, she says, I can't, I just can't do it, I can't do it any longer.
Eleven years is enough. Very good.
Okay Commissioners, moving on, we have several presentations here this evening. So if you want to turn to tab number six, item one, page one, the first presentation is from the opioid education and prevention coordinator, Ms. Julie Killie. This is the 2024 opioid awareness poster contest competition and the QAC Drug-Free Student Ambassadors. So we have Mr. Warren Wright as well, come on up Warren. Is Julie here today?
She's directing traffic and I'm hoping that she's right outside that door.
Okay, all right.
Hey, first of all, I wanted to thank Julie Killie, she's the opioid prevention
Pull that mic closer, Derek.
She's the opioid prevention specialist.
There she is.
And I'll talk a little more about that later. I also would like to recognize our superintendent of schools, who is in the back of the room, I believe, somewhere.
There she is.
And last of all, this program, you guys have a lot to do with that. And so we thank the county commissioners. So our first group is the 2023 QAC Opioid Awareness Poster Contest. Those students were invited to participate in a countywide opioid awareness poster contest. They were tasked with using creativity to share their messages about the dangers of substance abuse. We had 68 entries and there were seven winners, one from each public middle and high school and one from a QAC private schools and homeschool students. We even had an A1 entry, he told us about it, and it was okay. And when we went to schools to tell the kids they won, the staff came running over, who won? Well, it's here, what we're here for. So it was really well received by the county teachers and, and the kids. The prizes, as you guys can see, are pretty substantial. We wanted them to be that way and we'd like to thank Jim Roy and Bob Campbell for their donations. As you know, Jim Roy was one of the first members of the Drug Free Coalition twenty-some years ago. He gives to a lot of worthwhile causes in Queen Anne's County.
So Warren, I, I want to stop you right there because Jim has done so much for the Drug Free Coalition and for this county, and God bless you. Appreciate everything you've done. Thank you, Jim.
You know, you have to beg Jim to come to these, he does, he would rather be anonymous, so I'm sure he appreciates that.
He'd rather be collecting bees.
And Bob and Kathy Campbell, they're both career teachers in Queen Anne's County, so their whole life has been given to the kids. And now for Bob, for Bob to donate one of his driving school things is, is pretty cool and I know the kids really appreciate it. So Julie's got the names and the kids.
But we're talking 2024, you said 2023.
Four. Thank you.
No worries. Okay, sure.
While they're assembling them, I wanted to say we also have them in businesses. And how they got there is Julie put seventeen of them in her Toyota van and drove it around and the businesses got to pick which one they wanted.
You're unbelievable. Gotta watch from the TV.
So I'd like to congratulate the winners for the 2024 poster contest. And we have at our, to our left, Zaline Kelly, Quinn Francesconi from CMS, Maddie Hopwood from the Gunston School, Olivia Coppidge from Suddlersville Middle School, Aria Francesconi from Queen Anne's County High School, Bailey McMahon from Middle, Mattapeak Middle School, and Kyla Lor from Ken Island High School. Congratulations. All right, and I will have Jim start with your, your, your awards. So we have, again, Stevensville Middle School, Zaline Kelly, she, she requested the $300 Amazon gift card, Quinn, Quinn Francesconi, $300 Amazon gift card, Maddie Hopwood, $300 Amazon gift card, Olivia Coppidge, $300 Amazon gift card, Aria Francesconi, $300 Amazon gift card, Bailey McMahon, Mattapeak Middle, $300 Amazon gift card, and we have Kyla Lor requested the, are the driver's ed course from Campbell's Driving School. Thank you so much, Ms. Francesconi. And if we can try and get a couple pictures. Can we, county commissioners, stand up, please?
Yeah. They can get us over time.
Congratulations to all of you.
Hey, Julie, are any of these ambassadors? Okay, I see they're all young ladies, too. Boys gotta pick up their game. Thank you, awesome.
These are gonna be, these are gonna be hung here in the Liberty Building?
Uh, in the Liberty Building and they're also being
And we also cycle them to other buildings, Vincent Building, if somebody else wants to, so. All the schools?
Great program.
Are the high school and middle school?
Second group, 2024 Performing Arts Commercial Competition winner goes to the Gunston School. Well, with this, this evening, we have Maggie Porcello, not present but also involved in the, making the ad, Harrison Lavery, Ben Gilbert, and Arlo Badger. Representing Gunston, we're fortunate to have John Lewis, the headmaster, if he could stand. Kristi Grabus, the assistant headmaster for the Gunston School, and Dr. Ryan Asperon, he's the Performing Arts Department Chair. And they will be receiving a check for the school for their Performing Arts Program.
So they're receiving a $500 check for their Performing Arts Department. And we are going to take a minute to watch this.
Oh, good.
There you go.
Easy, 20, 24/7. The next RX PE8 Take Back Day is this Saturday. And then, of course, in October, we do our big push where we go out in the community. And so we've been really fortunate, we get a lot of medications every year, the Elks help us, the fire companies help us. But this, I think, year to true, to kids is the first time we've ever done that and so we'll try to saturate that. One really cool thing is, the group has its, if you open up the Board of Education page, the last column is for the Drug Free Coalition and Julie puts a lot of kid stuff on there, really cool, so the parents and the kids can all see it. Third group is the Queen Anne's County Drug-Free Student Ambassadors. There's 26 students who have completed 999 service hours from August 20, 2023 to April 2024. I would just like to say that it's 999 hours, not a thousand, because Julie is bought on to the smallest detail. They're all in uniforms. Some of the things that they've been doing, they've supported QAC, DFC events, all of those events, they've helped with QAC Goes Purple, actually, they kind of took over last year and this year we're gonna have to move to a larger location. And they get the messages out to the students as well as, as the parents. These students also completed a large group project which included the float in the Seno Christmas Parade, which I thought we should have won, working at the Queenstown Outlet Shop Project. If you haven't seen it, it's over by the coffee shop, in between the coffee shop and the Gap. In QAC, the next thing that you're doing is June 1 and it is the escape room, they're gonna, one and two, they're gonna be doing it at the new Y. And as they said to me, it's easy to come in, but you gotta earn your way out. And to do that, you have to learn these drug facts. It's really an interesting project. These students are receiving certificates and letters and it's from you guys, so thank you very much. As Julie is doing that, these, as ambassadors, these students showcased remarkable leadership and commitment, effectively raising awareness about the dangers of opioids while promoting substance-free living among the peers in the community. Their dedication to personal growth and unwavering resolve to share their beliefs make them truly deserving of these, of this recognition. In total, the 26 Drug-Free Student Ambassadors, we have 999 hours. In 2324, we have enjoyed watching them grow as ambassadors while they serve the community and act as role models for their peers.
All right, so each of these students is receiving a letter and a certificate from the county commissioners for their service hours. So we'll start with Maggie Porcello. She's from Gunston, 11th grade, 130.75 hours. Chloe Kirchner, we'll hold our applause till the end. Chloe Kirchner, CMS, 7th grader, 97 hours, 97 and a half hours. Quinn Francesconi, CMS, 7th grader, 78 hours. Tyler Sanker, Queen Anne's County High School, 9th grader, 63.75 hours. Madeline Eskew, Ken Island High School, 12th grader, 61.50 hours. Emma Sharps, Gunston, 11th grader, 61.25 hours. Margaret Burton, QAC, Queen Anne's County High School, 9th grader, 61 hours. Jacob Carhart, Queen Anne's County High School, 9th grader, 53.25 hours. Avery Mortimer, Ken Island High School, 10th grader, 45.75 hours. Logan Killie, Gunston, 11th grader, 45.50 hours. Leah Rhodes, Gunston, 9th grader, 40 hours. Daniel Mora, Queen Anne's County High School, 11th grader, 39 hours. Samuel Mora, Queen Anne's County High School, 10th grader, 36 hours. Claudia Jensen, Ken Island High School, 12th grader, 32.75 hours. Mia Walker, not here today, Gunston, 11th grader, 24 hours. Kylie McPhee, Ken Island High School, 12th grader, not here today, 20 points, 20.5 hours. Armani Black, Ken Island High School, 9th grader, 20.25 hours. Jed Cowan, Gunston, 9th grader, 15.75 hours. Kingston Peretti, CMS, 8th grader, 15.5 hours. Aleah Black, Ken Island High School, 10th grader, 15.25 hours. Breslin Sweeney, not here today, Ken Island High School, 10th grader, 14.75 hours. Ebony Patrick, not here today, Queen Anne's County High School, 10.75 hours. Maria Torres, Queen Anne's County High School, 9th grader, not here today, eight hours. Miranda Chaney is one of our newer ambassadors, not with us today, but she's from CMS and is 7th grader. Jenica Hoyer, from Stevensville Middle School, a 6th grader, not here with us this evening, also a new ambassador. And we also have William Rhodes, CMS, 7th grader, two hours, not here with us this evening. I'd like to congratulate all of you on all of the hard work that you've put into this program and making a difference in your community. So congratulations to all of you. I'm gonna have you all stand there for a minute because we have a couple special awards that are going out tonight. We have a special certificate being awarded this evening, that special recognition is going to Maggie Porcello, so if you could come to the front, I'd appreciate it, Maggie. And Mr. Wright is going to read her certificate. You wanna read her certificate? It's Maggie's.
Uh, we also have a special, oh, we also have a special certificate award this evening. Special recognition goes to Maggie Porcello. Maggie, would you come on up?
She's up.
Okay, Maggie stands as a beacon of excellence within the QAC Drug-Free Student Ambassador Program, radiate, radiating unwavering dedication and initiative. Her commitment to the cause is not just spoken, but is demonstrated through her proactive approach, consistently surpassing expectations by volunteering for diverse projects and ensuring the timely completion of them. Throughout the entirety of 2324 school year, Maggie has been an unwavering force, actively engaging in every county activity, which is vividly reflected in her astounding 130.75 volunteer hours. Moreover, Maggie's leadership shines as she takes on the role of mentor, guiding and inspiring young ambassadors to reach their full potential. Her ability to lead by example and nurture the talents of others is truly commendable. Within the Ambassador Program, Maggie's contributions are invaluable, amplifying its impact and fostering a culture of excellence. Plus, she's kind of a cool kid. We would also like to play, pay a special tribute to the graduating ambassadors, the following students, Madeline Eskew, Claudia Jensen, and Kylie McPhee. We can't thank you enough for all your dedication to the program during the senior year. We wish you all the best as you move forward in the next chapters of your life. There are those seniors.
Probably couldn't be with us this evening. Thank you, Chris.
For the fourth group?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so actually we'll dismiss our students at this time. Thank you, everyone, great job.
Julie, Julie? Julie?
Yes.
Can I mention something before the kids take off?
Okay, guys, hold, hold up for it.
Before the students take off? I just wanted to, I'm blown away by all the moms and dads that are here and all the kids. Today, just today, I ran into a young man who graduated from Ken Island High School. He had just come from a funeral from a classmate who died of an overdose. So what you kids are doing and what the parents are doing is immeasurable. If you can reach out to kids that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing and talk to them about it, and then share it with your parents, share it with the school, share it with your teachers, every life is worth living. So I don't mean to bring you down, I'm encouraging you. So thank you for everything that you do, appreciate it.
I wanted to mention the volunteers. With the help of our volunteers, the Ambassador Program wouldn't be able to accommodate so many events, so many activities. Their willingness to step up and lend a hand was truly appreciated. Thank you for all your support. I know Kathy always enjoys, as I do, working with the ambassadors. And the parents are not only kind of cool, they have skills, which has been really, really good for the, for the program. As a matter of fact, one of their presentations was so good, we had them come to the adult meeting and give the same program. Carol Francisconi, volunteer certificate. Over the span of two years, Carol has been an invaluable asset to the Queenance County Drug-Free Ambassador Program, offering her expertise in graphic design. Through her creative talents, she has elevated numerous projects, delivering visually stunning images of exceptional quality. Her dedication and selflessness are evident in every task she understays, reflecting positively on her career. I just wanted to say that everything that comes out from the ambassadors is professional quality, and Carol has a whole lot to do with that, and so we really appreciate it. Julie, wanted to recognize some other volunteers?
Yes, can I have Kathy Wright and Warren Wright come to the front, please? Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, so Kathy, Kathy is a volunteer. Kathy is a steadfast advocate for the Queenance County Drug-Free Student Ambassador Program, demonstrating unwavering dedication by attending every meeting and offering her assistance whenever it's required. Her invaluable contributions play a pivotal role in ensuring that the program operates smoothly and achieves its goals. Kathy's commitment and support significantly elevate the effectiveness and triumph of the initiative. Thank you, Kathy. And Warren. Warren Wright is a dedicated advocate for the Queenance County Drug-Free Student Ambassador Program, consistently offering his support to guarantee its success. His hands-on approach with the students' projects showcases his commitment to their development and the program's objectives. Warren's unwavering support has left an indelible mark on the program, significantly enhancing its effectiveness and impact. Thank you, Warren.
You'll be happy that this is the last little bit, and it's the first time that I'm not following Julie's script. But I wanted to thank Julie as the group's opioid prevention specialist. She works well with all the schools, all the agencies, and some hardliners in the Drug-Free Coalition. No data or preparation material or event is not planned, staffed, organized, and controlled. Here's an example, Warren is in yellow. She and Kathy work tirelessly to make sure everything is data-driven and fact-based. She also teaches the Bodkin Life Skills for the younger kids, and she is full of ideas. And the ambassadors, they make a real commitment, and it's not the most popular a subject for kids. And an average day for an ambassador is this, she goes to school, or he goes to school about 7:00 AM, does school, then they, after that, they do until 4:30, they do sports or other activities, then after that, they do ambassadors. So if the ambassador program, if you're active in that, that's a 7 to 7 day. Ambassador's parents are also really supportive and highly skilled. Finally, without the superintendent and the county commissioner's commitment to the DFC mission, we would not have these positive results, thanks to everyone. You know, as being a former educator, the highest compliment I ever gave was, "You make a difference," and all those kids, and you guys, you make a difference for everyone in Queenance County, so thank you very much.
Warren, you still are an educator. You still are an educator.
That was cool.
That was very cool, yep. Gets bigger every year. All right. All right, commissioners, moving on, our next presentation is item number 2, also Tab 6, pages 2 through 8. And it is, we have Mr. Ward Slakem, nutrient credits from the Oyster Recovery Program. So Mr. Slakem is the executive director of the Oyster Recovery Partnership. He's presenting implementing and leveraging nutrient reduction credits using oyster BNP's. Ward, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, and thank you very much to the commissioners for the opportunity to come here and present some of the work that we do at Oyster Recovery Partnership. There's a presentation I provided last week for the commissioners to, you know, to peruse, and I'm sure it was slightly out of context. I've added a couple slides. Thank you. I've added a couple slides to an updated presentation that's up on the screen that might help put this into context, but I was, I came and presented it over a year ago in February of last year, and just, that was a briefing on two specific projects. One, I'll be talking about tonight, but the other one is a project that we're currently conducting that's focused on Eastern Bay and oyster production in Eastern Bay. And that was a project that the commissioners gave us a letter of endorsement that we were awarded funding to pursue, and that's been ongoing, and it's moving along very nicely. What I'd like to talk about today is the second part of what I briefed you on, let's see, over a year ago, and that is the use of oysters as best management practices that can be used in terms of a county, it can be, the oysters can be used to remove nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, from your county TMDL requirements. And when I was here in February of last year, I was giving you a brief about the potential for oysters to be approved as BNP's for restoration and also for BNP's for use in the public fishery. And at the time, they weren't approved, but they were approved back in June of last year, and so now those particular BNP's are now available. I kind of wanted to start with, with who is the Oyster Recovery Partnership, if that's okay. We're, I'd like to do that because we're now, this is our 30th year of existence. We were formed out of the need to really focus efforts on the restoration of oysters in the Chesapeake Bay and Maryland in particular, and that's with the focus of conserving oysters, but also to promote their economic and their environmental benefits. So we do a lot of work with the public fishery trying to promote our seafood. I'm a Queenance County resident, so, you know, that's something that's really true to my heart, and trying to make sure that we're maintaining our culture, our way of life for the waterman, but also really promoting seafood. It really seems to be something that's a mainstay here in this county. And I just want to point out that on our board, we actually have two really prominent seafood industry members that are part of Queenance County. Mr. Jason Ruth and then Karen Ortell, who are part of the Harris Seafood Company. We're, you know, I like to think that we're very well-respected within the industry, which includes the waterman industry, commercial harvest part of that. And, you know, we come to the table and we implement projects that will benefit not just the health of the Chesapeake Bay through oysters, but also watermen and the seafood industry. Just wanted to give you a list of, you know, some of the funding that we manage. ORP is more or less a contractor to the state to really support the continued enhancement of public fishing grounds, public oyster grounds, where we're working with local watermen in all of the coastal counties to find more shell to put back down on those reefs that have been harvested. We also are working with the Maryland Department of Natural Resources and their commitment to restore the sanctuary, oyster sanctuaries throughout the state. And we're actually now on the verge of completing the fifth sanctuary, that's the Menocan River, out of the total five that were part of the Chesapeake Bay commitment. That should be completed by the end of next year. But that's, you know, so that's sort of ORP's scope. What I wanted to talk about was that, what I said earlier, the recent approval of oyster restoration and oysters harvested in the public fishery as BNP's. And I wanted to, you know, this is a new slide that you all haven't seen, but to try to put this into context of why are oysters even approved as BNP's? First and foremost, I'm assuming that you as commissioners understand what a BNP is, you know, best management practice. So, for example, if I'm part of agriculture and I am struggling with the amount of nitrogen that I'm putting down on my fields, and that's, you know, basically something that, over, you know, over the course of a watershed in terms of Queenance County, all of ag might be putting more and more nitrogen that goes into the bay. Your county planning group is actually trying to manage the amount of nitrogen that goes in, so they may be advocating to farmers, "Why don't you put in a cover crop," which is an approved BNP, and that cover crop will actually remove nitrogen before it gets in the water. So in this case, an oyster is sort of synonymous with the cover crop. It's sort of a tool that's going to remove nitrogen and also phosphorus. The only big difference is, it's in the water now. It's actually the only approved BNP that's in water. So how does that even impact Queenance County? Well, again, as I said, the great thing about oysters is that they're removing nitrogen and phosphorus and sequestering that in their tissue and shell, just because of their natural feeding process. They're eating algae, those algae are going to have nitrogen and phosphorus in that. We know that too much nitrogen, too much phosphorus in the Chesapeake Bay is a problem, so oysters will remove that because they're putting the nitrogen that they consume and building their own tissue from that. So in the end, as the oysters feed, they're building a biomass that includes nitrogen and phosphorus, both in their tissue but also in their shell. For an oyster to be approved and used as a BNP, it has to be a new oyster. It can't be, it's not oysters that currently exist out in the bay naturally. Those are not considered BNP's. It's oysters that are produced and put down as new oysters in the bay, and I'll get to that in a minute. What I want to really emphasize here is that there is, as a BNP, there's a requirement under the EPA that BNP's have to be verified. You can't just assume it's working. So a cover crop, the amount of coverage, the acreage, that has to be verified by someone to then be built into your county plans for removing nitrogen. The same thing applies to oysters. You can't just assume because we're putting them there that they're still there years later and that they're functioning the way that, what they, that we intended them to. And I'm really here to talk about, you know, the potential for the Queenance County to continue to support our work in, you know, moving the possibility of developing a nitrogen, sorry, nutrient crediting program within watersheds. So the part that's missing is this verification, and I'll get to that at the end. But as I said earlier, the last bullet there is that any nitrogen or phosphorus removed by oysters would apply to the EPA TMDL and also your county watershed implementation plans. And this is just a cartoon that shows algae being consumed creates more oyster biomass, the nitrogen and phosphorus gets bound up, sequestered within the tissue and shell. There's also a component that happens in restoration at the reef level, that is a process that there are bacteria, bacteria that consume organic matter, and they will remove nitrogen through that process. That's also an approved BNP, and it is by far the bigger, in terms of the amount of nitrogen being removed, it's probably the most significant BNP of oysters at this point. Just going to move on. So what are new oysters? This is just a schematic that shows, I don't know if there's a pointer here, but I'll go from left to right on this screen. Schematic that shows what ORP knows as new oysters. Oyster larvae are produced in a hatchery. In our case, we work with the Horn Point Lab down in Cambridge, Maryland, they have an oyster hatchery. They're producing larvae, so they're spawning oysters in that hatchery in a controlled setting.
Horn Point?
At Horn Point. Those larvae then are introduced into tanks, and what's in the middle there is a picture of spat-on-shell is what we call it. Those are oyster spats. So those are new oysters that have settled on a shell, and they start to grow as oysters do naturally. Below that, and I know it's, you know, kind of hard to see, but below that is a pier, we call that the setting pier. That's located at Horn Point on the Chop Tank River. There are 52 small swimming pool-sized tanks on this pier that we put shell in. We add those larvae in there and they create what's on the top there, that spat-on-shell. So we're producing new oysters, that's what I mean about new oysters. They have to be new. The BNP is really centered around the production of hatchery-produced spat-on-shell. And then those oysters will be put onto vessels out of Horn Point, and they'll be deployed. Typically, most of the work that we do is in sanctuaries from there, but ORP is managing contracts with the state where we're also working with vendors who do the very same thing, and they'll put spat down on public fishing grounds. And that's what the public fishery BNP would apply to.
Eastern Bay that you're putting the spat on?
There's...
Man-made reefs.
Well, they're not, the reefs are not, not all of them are man-made, and actually in Eastern Bay, there are none that are man-made at this point. The process that we use is, we'll go back to areas that we know historically there have been oyster bars. And all we're doing is enhancing it. We think the base, the shell base is still relevant, is still useful, we will put the spat-on-shell on top of that, that enhances it. There is a process, the other five tributaries, I'll focus on the Menocan, where part of the reefs in that sanctuary are constructed with granite, a granite base, and then we come and we put the spat-on-shell on top of that. The building of those reefs like that is not happening in Eastern Bay at this point. The state is focused on restoring Eastern Bay, the Miles River, and, but there, as far as I know, there are no locations within those areas that have been identified as being, that need to be constructed. So right now, it's just spat on the shell. This is right here on this slide, it is describing the three BNP's that are available. I mentioned oyster reef restoration is a BNP, and that is the sequestration, so the consumption of nitrogen and phosphorus, and then that binding into the tissue and the shell of restored reefs. The other BNP associated with restoration is what I was referring to earlier, denitrification. That's where the bacteria will devour organic matter, and through that process, they're releasing into gas that leaves the bay. That particular BNP is the one that removes the most nitrogen than any of these. It's very significant. And then the last one, number three there, is what we call the licensed harvest BNP, and that is nutrients that are removed in the tissue of oysters through harvest. But those oysters, all of these oysters, have to be ones that have been produced at a hatchery and planted. That's new biomass. I mentioned earlier, they have to be, you know, these BNP's have to be verified, that's no different than any other BNP that's out there, cover crops, wastewater treatment plants, they're retrofitting and they're upgrading, all of those things need to be verified, those are all considered BNP's as well. The restoration BNP, the work that ORP does in monitoring, is equivalent to the verification protocols that are required for that BNP. So we've already, and that's just diving down, assessing biomass, we have already established those protocols, just through the work that we do. The public fishery BNP will need verification protocols established for it, and ORP does a lot of work with the state and also the commercial industry where we think that we already have available tools to help us establish those verification protocols. But there would be things like, if I'm a harvester and I'm harvesting a bar that has hatchery-produced spat-on-shell, well, we need to quantify that harvest. How many bushels did you harvest at that location? So those are things that don't necessarily happen currently in real time. They're happening on documented pieces of paper that the industry is submitting, but for EPA to, you know, to verify this and determine its accuracy, we think they're going to probably want a little bit more oversight in that process to use that harvest as BNP's. as BMPs. So, what I, again, I said, I wanted to, you know, get at least some consideration for the commissioners and the county to work with ORP. We're trying to, at this point, identify funding where we can develop a program to essentially design and implement the protocols and develop a framework where these BMPs can be taken advantage of by states or, I mean, sorry, by counties or other entities that might have a need for purchasing nutrients to satisfy TMDLs or other contracts that they might have. The goal of the project is really to develop a BMP implementation framework to allow for access to existing oyster nutrient, or oyster restoration nutrient reduction credits, and to leverage the oyster restoration BMPs in public fishery to ultimately expand the potential interest in oyster restoration and also support the public fishery in the future. So, and what that is really suggesting is that if there's an interest and we can, at this point, create credits, and then there's a buyer, a willing buyer, whether that's a county or another entity, well, then that would generate revenue, and then that revenue would go back into restoration or back to the public fishery to continue to support sustainable fishing practices. As part of the pilot program, this is sort of repetitive with those goals, but our objectives would be to establish the verification requirements and protocols to quantify oyster restoration nutrient reduction credits under the oyster restoration and harvest BMPs, and then also to develop a process to provide access to nutrient reduction credits and leverage the BMP framework to expand oyster restoration. Pretty much what I just said before that. And right now, I have been out, the BMPs have been available since June of last year. I have met with several other counties to discuss the interest in this as a pilot. Really, what we're trying to do is really push this forward so it gets implemented and that there's a transparent process that anyone who might take advantage of that, whether that's watermen, whether that's a county, whether that's an MS4 permit holder, we would just want to develop the protocols so it's very clear how to take advantage of nutrient reduction credits from oysters. In terms of who essentially is the group that would buy off on any nutrient reduction credit that comes from oysters, the Maryland Department of Natural Resources is sort of the overseer of this. They would be a partner in this project with us. We're working with them directly to try to implement this and find funding to develop this into a project. We have targeted the counties of Queen Anne's, Talbot, and Anarundel, and we'd be working with the watermen's associations within your county, within Talbot County. In Anarundel, there is a waterman's association, but we're really looking at the Severn River where there's no harvest, so we're just using that as a testbed to really prove this concept. Looking for, it would be between an 18-month and a two-year project to really work through the process. There's no commitment, no financial commitment from the counties to be part of the project. Really, what we're looking for is access to county representatives who might be the people who are managing your whips and managing your nutrient reduction needs, so that way we can fully understand the process. One of the, one of the interesting parts about, you know, the fact that this is, that oysters are BMP, that sort of came to light after the fact is, well, how would a county actually gain access to the bottom and do restoration on the bottom if it's actually the state that owns that bottom and they're the ones who manage it? And so, there's a little bit of working out those bugs, I think, that needs to happen, and that's really what we would want to be doing through this pilot. We'd also want to be taking advantage of any existing credits that are out there from previous restoration or previous public fishery plantings, and then make those available to a county to work that through the process, so that way it could be actually a transaction that would be directly taken off of your TMDO goals in the project. Again, there's no financial obligation, you know, as I see it, in the process of the pilot project. I would be looking for a letter of collaboration or a letter of endorsement, just like you provided for our previous NIFWIF grant, and then also, like I said, some time with county staff, and then we'll be working with watermen. And again, the final outcome of this, we're hoping, is going to be a pathway to transfer nutrient credits to support investment in the public fishery and also in restoration.
So, how do you, how do you, you said multiple times that the only works with spat on shell, for instance, from Horn Point. How do you tell the difference between wild versus Horn Point?
In terms of, and it, I want to stress, it doesn't, that's our experience with Horn Point. There are other hatcheries out there. There are other entities that can take advantage of this, too. But how do we differentiate that?
Yeah.
It really starts in the planning phase. We're identifying locations where we're putting spat on shell down. And so, we've already done some assessment there that-
Sorry, you've already done assessment and it could be a dead bar?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So, in this case, the majority of the time, there might be a healthy shell base where we're putting spat on shell. It doesn't mean there's a very productive bar. We're not going to go to a location and say, it's a very productive bar, let's put more spat on shell. We're going to conserve those resources and go to those ones that are actually not productive and try to enhance them. When it comes to the public fishing, the way that it works is you have, it's in the planning. You have to identify in the beginning before you plant an area to say, we're going to set this location aside, and that's going to be a BMP designated location, and then we're going to put spat on shell there. And the way, and that might actually be a productive bar because the fishery is really trying to just enhance what they're, you know, what they're harvesting and they're trying to maintain its sustainability. So, in the report, the experts who created that said, well, we're not going to get mired in trying to go and do a pre-assessment there and try to, you know, accurately estimate the number of oysters that's there, and then put some down and then try to do the math. We're just going to say, we know how this process works with spat on shell. We have a good knowledge base of how many are likely to survive. And so, therefore, they just said, if you know how many spat on shell you put down on that location, well, then you're only eligible for a percentage of that return in the eventual harvest. In this case, it's only 3%. They were very conservative. So, if you designate an area like this size, you plant it with spat on shell, you come back three years later, which is sort of the common timeframe, and you harvest that, well, 3% of what you put down is only eligible to be used as a BMP. So, once that's exhausted, then this isn't eligible anymore, or you come back and you replant it. We think there's tremendous value from a sustainability perspective to really advocate for that process, because then there's potential revenue that might come off that's in addition to harvest, and it's also really getting into higher-level spatial management, which is important for oysters. Did I answer that, or?
Yeah, no, you did.
So, how many locations in Queen Anne's do we, are you, do we presently have through your group, and what is the goal? How many would you like to have?
How many locations? In terms of the pilot? Right now, it's the three counties.
No, no, no. In Anne's County. How many locations have you folks put spat in?
My organization, Oyster Recovery Partnership, we have put spat on about 10 acres. There are other groups that are contracted by the state, putting more spat on shell down, starting last year. So, I want to say it's probably something more like 40 acres. We would use, again, this is really just a test case, taking that, using that as an example to say, okay, but none of the, at this point, none of those, and this is in the sanctuary only I'm talking right now, so this is restoration, none of those have been monitored. So, the monitoring, the verification is key to quantify the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus. That would be something we would want to do under this program to get the numbers equate how much that is in nitrogen and phosphorus. In terms of spat on shell planting in the public fishery, we're planting in the public fishery every year in Eastern Bay. There's probably at least 50 acres that might have potential. But the only challenge there is, are they currently being harvested? You know, if they were planted last year and they're harvested, that would make it difficult. So, we're really, we're really at the beginning. The infancy stage is to really build this plan out.
With the 10 acres, the watermen can't harvest, but the other, the other 50 you just said, they can harvest.
They could, absolutely, yep. They're designated just by-
Which means that they're harvesting before they're adults.
What's that?
Which means that they're harvesting them before they're adults to, that have grown to capacity.
Exactly. Some of that currently exists, where they're actually planting and then they, they'll go harvest on that same location. It isn't something that happens 100% of the time. And like I said, we think that this process would help to make it much more sustainable because they may be saying, let's put this in a rotation scenario where we've got two-year-old, three-year-old, four-year-old. And don't get me wrong, I'm not here, you know, suggesting that that's not being considered with our watermen in Queen Anne's County. They fully understand that value, and there's, there is a fair amount of funding to support this continued planting that's outside of the pilot that I'm talking about. I'm talking about, let's find other ways to take advantage of the BMP that could actually generate additional revenue that might be sustainable into the future when the other funding dries up.
This-
What you need to, you know, the additional revenue is, because the shell's so expensive. Shell's the problem, so, you know, it's-
Shell's a big problem.
How do you generate additional funding to keep buying that shell? And this is one of the programs, it works both ways. It helps with your whip and helps your nutrient reduction and helps buy shell. So, it's, it really is a, it can become a very win-win for everybody if you can get some of these dead, you know, areas back to life, so.
A question for you. The pilot program, are you going to do the pilot program on areas that are already declared sanctuaries? Are you going to create new sanctuaries?
No, we're not creating any new sanctuaries. It would be within the current-
Existing ones that you have now.
The existing ones, yes. Let me give you an example because the denitrification, as I said earlier-
Before you go there, I think you need to quantify what sanctuary is. Because, you know, we're putting oyster down, spat on shell, and we're not touching it for three years. Sanctuary, you're never touching it. You know what I mean? That's, so there's a big difference here when people use the word sanctuary, because, you know, there's, what's the cleanest river now in the entire nation? The, which, wherever you guys loaded it up with cement and spat, or whoever did that, the state, you know, it's now the cleanest.
Harris Creek.
Harris Creek, that's the one, I couldn't think of a name, yes.
So, you said it. I mean, you already answered the question. The reason why they're sanctuaries is because you're not allowed to harvest oysters there. Those oysters are there to be conserved, as the law states now, right? That's the way it is on the books. And so, those are pre-existing sanctuaries that were put in practice years ago. They were updated in 2010 to expand them, and there's a lot of sanctuary acreage within Queen Anne's County. Chester River, Miles River, Eastern Bay, yep. So, a lot of those areas are, at this point, protected from harvest or exempt from harvest. There is still a lot of habitat within Eastern Bay that is there available for public harvest. And Eastern Bay isn't the most productive area for public harvest. The watermen and the combination of DNR and ORP, I think we do a really good job of managing the, you know, what's there at its peak, right? So, we're doing the best we can. I think we can do more. But Eastern Bay historically was a very productive area, and that's, so, all of Queen Anne's County.
I was, thank you.
Are the sanctuaries ever rotated? In other words, do you take, you take bottom out of a sanctuary? It's been a sanctuary for 10 years. Does it, do you open it up to public fishery? Never.
Not at this point.
So, once it's, does it maybe-
That's not, that's not them, that's-
Right.
I'm just saying, once, I'm asking a question. Once bottom is declared a sanctuary, then it'll be a sanctuary forever?
There's discussion that maybe they're not going to be sanctuaries forever. There's a total of 52 sanctuaries. The five that I referred to that are part of the Chesapeake Bay agreement and the overall Maryland and Virginia goal to restore a total of 10, and Maryland has five. Those five, those are Harris Creek, Tred Avon, Little Chop Tank, Menocan, and St. Mary's. There's a law that states they can never be taken out of sanctuary. All of the rest, there is no law that specifically states that they can't be taken out of sanctuary. So, and it's, it's debated, it's discussed a lot.
But your program's not, you're not working with sanctuaries at all. You're working with unproductive bottoms that you want to close for three years.
What I described here was two things. We are working in the sanctuary where there will be nutrient reduction credits-
Right.
-because the oysters are there and they're staying there. They're, we're also working in the public fishery with watermen to enhance public fishing grounds, which would also have a set of nutrient reduction credits available.
What I was going to say is, I was talking to a waterman the other day, and he told me that up county, maybe off Rock Hall or somewhere, there are million, to Commissioner Moran's point, there are millions of oysters, and it might be from the Longenhelders.
Of Manawar.
Off, off the shell, off the shell, and to Jim's point, they're very expensive, but for whatever reason, they can't be harvested, even though they're dead shells? Is that, is that a possibility that the state could allow that to happen?
There's a permit application at the Board of Public Works currently requesting access to that shell deposit. It's called Manawar Shale.
A letter from us, be of any help?
It's very, to be straightforward, it's very politically charged, and it's a lot, it's been discussed for years, for a very long time. That permit has been at the Board of Public Works, I think, for at least five years. So, it was-
In a sentence, what's, what's, why can't-
Environmental opposition, and even, and even-
Picking dead shells out of the ocean.
And even waterman opposition. So, there's watermen up in Baltimore County that make a living there. They don't want it touched either. So, it's, it's a very difficult subject. There is, there's millions of shells, millions of bushels of shell.
How thick is the cement on the shell mass that's there?
I, I think that there's, well, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I'm pretty safe to say there's at least five, 5 million bushels of shell available.
Bushels.
And there's, there's more than that. I'm being very conservative, so I don't give a number that's outlandish, but, and that's a lot.
So, changing subject, I was just doing a little research, knowing you were coming in. There's a program down in St. Mary's County where they make these cement reef balls, and they put them in the river, and the clarity is unbelievable when, and then, you know, they put the spat on it. Is something like that, is that a good program? It's actually called raising reef balls, if you wanted to Google it.
It's, the way that they do it, it's probably in a sanctuary, so I think that that's a viable approach. What that does is it creates three-dimensional habitat, not just for oysters, but it's very valuable for fish. So, I think in that context, yes. There is a challenge with that, if you're really talking about that in areas where harvest takes place, because you can't harvest in and around those, right? So, so-
But if you put them in the sanctuary-
When you put them in sanctuary, that's a, that's a good addition to large-scale oyster restoration. That's a really good, because diversity of habitat is very valuable for marine species, and that allows, you know, we're out there doing sort of layering of new oysters on top of existing oyster bars. There's not a lot of high relief with that in most cases, unless you're building that constructed base and then putting the oysters on top. So, when you come with reef balls-
Because it's just the silt that go over it and they're dead, right?
It, it's possible.
Or the Conawago Dam opens.
That's, that's, so, so there's, I mean, you know, where we're going with this, with, in particular with the BMP is, you know, that sediment is laden with nutrients, right? So, Conawago Dam is a contributor of nutrients to the bay. I'm not saying that we're fighting to get access to them, but it's something to consider, that this is a approach to mitigate-
It's the biggest contributor when they open up the floodgates. It all comes down here and goes over the oyster beds.
It does. We've seen it.
Thank you, Ward. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
It's good information.
Okay, so, I mean, again, we're looking just for support for the program, so-
What does, so, you know-
Send us what you're looking for.
Send us some bad thoughts.
Okay, will do. Thanks.
Okay, commissioners, our third presentation this evening, this is a proclamation for all seasons. We have item number three on page nine. This is Ms. Kristy Morando, Director of Victim Services for All Seasons. This is proclamation 24-11. Director of Victim Services for All Seasons. This is proclamation twenty-four dash eleven.
Patrick has that one, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
You'd like us to read the proclamation first, or would you like to-
I mean, I could speak a little bit first, just basic. Um, I'm Christie Morando. I'm the Director of Victim Services at For All Seasons Behavioral Health and Rape Crisis Center, and we serve victims of crime. Um, it is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, but we serve all victims of crime, whether it's shooting survivors or, um, human trafficking survivors. We have a big campaign, so if you see our signs on the highway, um, and I work directly, my team works directly with the survivors. We respond twenty-four, twenty-four hours, seven days a week to the local ERs. I see one of my ER buddies here. Hi, Steve. And, um, we respond to, with the forensic nurses to go over the victims' rights and, um, collaborate with the team of forensic nurses and law enforcement and the survivor, um, for what they need. Um, and, and we are the only rape crisis center on the midshore. Um, and we're just a safe place for survivors to come for support and healing.
Really surprised to see that there was, uh, whatever you call it, you know, on Kent Island, a house, a house for trafficking.
Oh, yeah.
But our great, our great, uh, Sheriff's Department shut it down. So it's here.
Oh, it's here. I, I would say I have about, who are, uh, five active cases in Queen Anne's County that from home, referrals come from, um, Homeland Security I get for, to support survivors. Um, local law enforcement, I partner a lot with, um, Maria Becero and Detective Jason Rickert, so we collaborate a lot. And I live in Queen Anne's County, so it's really important for me to keep all the counties safe, but, um, you know, especially here in Queen Anne's County.
I think people would be surprised of, you know, on the subject specifically of human trafficking, and that's always, and something that's been a great concern to this set of Commissioners. We've had presentations done here in front of us, and, um, it's scary to think that there could be situations that you're absolutely completely oblivious to the fact that it's actually taking place. Uh, it's scary.
And they just know how to get, attract our kids online and through-
It's modern-day slavery.
Yeah, mhm.
The, uh, the trafficking meeting at the library a few weeks ago, so. May I have the honor of reading this to you?
No, sir. Thank you.
Proclamation twenty-four eleven. Whereas sexual violence is widespread and impacts everyone, including families, homes, schools, and workplaces, Sexual Assault Awareness Month aims to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate the community about how to prevent it. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community and carry a tremendous and emotional financial cost, leading to long-term physical and psychological health problems, including chronic pain, anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder, sexually transmitted diseases. The estimated lifetime cost of rape is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars per victim. Whereas nationwide, eighty-one percent of women and forty-three percent of men reported experienced some form of sexual harassment or assault in their lifetime. Whereas one in three female victims and one in four male victims of completed or attempted rape first experience it between the ages of eleven and seventeen. And whereas one in four undergraduate women experience sexual assault or misconduct at thirty-three of the nation's major universities, including Columbia. Whereas the theme of Sexual Assault Awareness Month twenty-twenty-four is Building Connected Communities, a campaign that helps us create strong, connected communities that take care of one another, prioritize safe environments, respectful behavior, and preventive education reduce the likelihood of sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Community-level prevention benefits everyone in the community, and we all have a role to play in preventing sexual violence. And whereas Queen Anne's County supports the experts who work to identify and prevent sexual violence, and is dedicated to providing services and avenues for survivors to seek proper care and treatment. Thank you for what you do. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and each day of the year is an opportunity to stand with survivors, to recognize progress in combating these crimes and recommit to reducing sexual violence in Queen Anne's County and on the eastern shore. Now therefore, we, the county Commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby recognize April twenty-twenty-four as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Queen Anne's County and on the eastern shore, and call this observance the attention of all our citizens. Signed, all of the Commissioners of Queen Anne's County and the County Administrator.
Question for you.
Sure.
If somebody who's watching this evening, uh, knows of somebody, or somebody who's watching it, is experiencing it, how can they reach out to you folks? What do they do if they want some help?
We have a twenty-four hour hotline, which we use for reporting, and, and my team forks the hotline, so we alternate between all of us.
What is that number?
And that number is four-one-eight, four-one-zero-eight-two-zero-fifty-six-hundred. And they can also call and ask for me, Christie Morando, um, and, um, the main office number's
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, moving, moving on, our next, uh, presentation is for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And this is a presentation, uh, an overview of the new Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. We have a whole group here from Kimley Horn. We have our Departments of Parks and Recreation, Steve Chanley, Public Works, Steve Kahoon, and I think we have members of the Bike and Ped Committee here as well. So, uh, I know that is in your, it's in your book, um, item four, pages ten through twenty-nine. It's also up on the screen here, uh, for your viewing pleasure. So I'm not sure who's gonna lead the discussion here, but Caitlin Wellness is, uh, from Kimley Horn. I think she was instrumental in putting the plan together, so Caitlin?
Yes, great to meet you all, and you can call me Kate tonight. So we'll go through this presentation. I'm gonna set a timer to make sure I do not go over my twenty-minute allocation. Um, all right, let's see how we advance the slides. Oh, there we go. All right, so just a quick background for you all in terms of the project purpose. So this intent was really promoted through the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. What we were trying to achieve with this master plan was really identifying recommendations that was gonna identify facilities for all types of users. Pedestrians, recreational cyclists, families, transportation cyclists and users, and how do we encourage people and feel comfortable in using these bicycle and pedestrian facilities for both recreation and transportation. We also wanted to prioritize these for implementation. Understanding there are limited resources to actually get these projects constructed and in use, we wanted to make sure that we were identifying projects that were gonna have the most benefit and impact to the county, and how to prioritize those, so when resources come in, you all know where to allocate that funding. And then we also wanted to identify some softer strategies to really focus on what are things besides infrastructure that can be achieved as part of this master plan, such as bike-to-work day, wayfinding and signage, and just encouraging people to look at these forms of transportation and recreation. So just to talk through the master planning process a bit, first step was really identifying existing conditions. Understanding who, who is the who here in Queen Anne County, right? Understanding what plans have been developed already, and figuring out what is the baseline of information that we're working with, especially as we're looking at the existing transportation network. We also had a lot of public input as part of this process. We had multiple stakeholder meetings. We had a online survey, an online map. We had an in-person public meeting here in Centerville, and we also had a virtual public meeting as well, as well, that was attended by many of the people who are here to support this project tonight. Through combining those two efforts, we developed recommendations, and really that was looking for connectivity throughout the county that could be used by all types of users. We then ran those routes that were developed against a set of criteria and prioritize those projects. And then from there, we developed this master plan and identified that next steps for implementation. So just a little background on existing conditions. We documented that. I mentioned county demographics, understanding your existing infrastructure, as well as looking at things such as crash, crash history here that included your more vulnerable users of bicycle and pedestrian, um, transportation users. So you guys, at a starting base, have twenty-six miles of existing trails here. That's made up of seventeen different facilities, three miles of bike lanes, and over a hundred and ten miles of sidewalks, most of those located within the towns. But you really start with a great base of a bicycle and pedestrian network to build off of, which is what we wanna do. We wanna capitalize on where infrastructure investment has already been made. We wanted to talk a little bit about the stakeholder input that we heard. We had one stakeholder meeting with public, uh, with bicycle and pedestrian advocates. We had one with county and town staff, and we actually had one with economic development staff, too. Um, they all had different discussion topics, but some of the key things that we heard, a lot focused on the north and south route, um, fifty network connections that are needed, which you're nodding your head. Yes, we heard that a lot. Um, connections between a lot of the towns was identified as well. Um, a sidewalk retrofit program was also mentioned, and the importance of trails as a tourism attraction, right? Outside of use by your residents, how do you attract people to Queen, Queen Anne's County to use these facilities, spend money here, right? Because these facilities are great, they're well-connected, and it's a great attractor. The public input, so we had a public survey. We had three hundred responses to that, which was a really great turnout. We've had some surveys in other counties, which we don't even hit a hundred. So three hundred was a phenomenal turnout. Connected with that survey was an online public map, where we got over two hundred comments from the public. This was just identifying locations of, we need a connection here, hey, we need some crossing facilities here, we'd love to be able to bike to this location. So that was really a very visually, um, engaging way that we heard back from the community here. Um, we also gauged in that survey the types of people that were responding to that in terms of citizens here. Many of them identified themselves as interested but concerned or enthused and confident when it came to being a cyclist and a pedestrian in the county. And these responses really indicate that there's a strong interest in using bicycle and pedestrian facilities, but despite their significant interest, there were sentiments that there are barriers that influence how they use it, right? And a lot of that is terms of the connectedness, right, or missing gaps within the network of where they wanna access through bike or walking. We also had an open house. This open house was in person. Um, we did a lot of engaging activities with the public during this. Some key things we heard was the connectivity between the South Island and the Cross Island Trail, as well as the cross, crossing at Route Fifty, improving walkability to and within the towns, um, understanding that safe facilities are needed in your more rural parts of the county, providing access to retail and commercial areas was also something we heard. And then they mentioned amenities, right? The need for bike parking, wayfinding, and just maps to let people know where they can go via these facilities. So through all that public engagement, we developed vision and goals. So they're up here, safety, accessibility, connectivity, equity, multimodal, and health and comfort. So this was really developed through a lot of the public engagement we heard, and these guided the process in how we were gonna evaluate the different routes that were recommended. Existing plans. We also wanted to honor that the county has done a lot of work, and, as well as the state, in terms of, uh, projects that identify bicycle and pedestrian plans and needs. So we reviewed a lot of those existing plans. We worked with, uh, Maryland Department of Transportation created a level of traffic stress. This lets you know what it feels like to bike on a road based on speed, number of lanes, uh, daily traffic that's out there, and that was really a large guiding principle as we were developing recommendations. And then we also looked at other project considerations, um, as we looked at those existing plans, to make sure that these items that you see down here, the Chesapeake Bay Crossing Study, the sidewalk gap analysis, the pedestrian overpass and Cox Creek connectivity, and then Rails to Trails Program were reflected within this master plan to make sure that that is adopted and those move forward in terms of feasibility and, uh, moving forward to help build this network. So we then developed route recommendations. Um, we looked at different origins and destinations that was identified through the public, through that online mapping, as well as the in-person public workshop. We looked at the comprehensive plan, which had a lot of routes developed as well. We use the Maryland bicycle, uh, level of traffic stress to identify where do you really have high-stress roads that you need a separated facility that would encourage use by a variety of user types. And then we married all that up with existing conditions to determine what routes really make sense when you're building a countywide network, and what are some of the constraints that are there. So we're gonna go through a couple slides that have some maps. These are a little difficult to read, but as you can see, what was recommended from this project really was a comprehensive set of projects that build upon where you all have your facilities of the Cross Island and the South Island Trail, and where we heard from the public they wanted to connect, right? In between a lot of the towns, looking at other ways that you could connect that maybe are, are different than how you would drive between some of those facilities. And the next slide, it's hard to see the difference, but you could see if you look at the towns, if I can switch it, uh, the sidewalk, um, network comes in there, because we wanted to make sure that we brought that in, because when you're looking countywide and you're flying, what I like to say, twenty thousand feet above the county, right? There's a lot that you can do, and we wanna all honor that there are recommendations mostly for sidewalk facilities when you start to look into, into the towns that allow people to park in a single location and then walk the rest of the time that they're in that count, in that town, because it's well-connected through your pedestrian network. So after we developed all these routes, we wanted to pri, we wanted to prioritize them. Um, so going back to those project goals, what we did was we created criteria that could be spatially analyzed. That just essentially means we put it all on a map, and we ran it against the route recommendations that we had on there, and it let us know which of the routes were satisfying things like connecting to an existing trail, for example, or in a, uh, in an area of the county that has, uh, high zero car households, or where you have bus stops and park-and-ride lots. So we ran that analysis, um, whoop, oh my goodness. Hold on. So we ran that analysis. We had to weigh them against one another to prioritize, right? When we're looking at these different categories, how do we start to weigh them a little bit differently? We could apply them evenly across all of them, but through public feed, through the public feedback, connectivity was brought up consistently, right? So we knew that that needed to be highly prioritized. Safety was also something that was mentioned in terms of feeling unsafe, wanting to make sure that where there were higher-stress areas or a history of vulnerable user crashes, wanted to have facilities in those locations. So this was how the different criteria were weighted against the projects. Oh my gosh, Steve, what did I do? Okay, here are the results of the project prioritization. So that original map I showed you, um, this starts to break it down of what's in the top tier. I know, I'm good with this clicker.
Oh, no, I'm good with Queens County, Centerville.
Yes.
That's what, that's what's good.
But so what we did was, we didn't wanna rank these one, two, three, four, five. We wanted to put them in your top tier, your middle tier, and your, and your bottom tier, essentially, because they all do build connectivity, address safety, increase accessibility. It's more of which of these projects, right, were bubbling up to the top, that as you get resources, where should you maybe consider a project from the top tier that may increase your connectivity, may increase where you have a history of, um, unsafe conditions, where you have higher level of traffic stress. So these were the projects that fell into the top tier. As you can see, many of them are close to your existing trails, because like we said, we wanna build upon the, um, infrastructure investments that you have already made, and we heard that repeatedly during our public process of, we've gotta get things connected, and we have to build upon those, um, existing trail facilities. I'm not even pressing anything. All right, middle tier, oh wait. All right, Steve? I think you gave me a bad one. All right, middle tier we have here. So as you can see, this starts to build upon the, uh, top-tier projects, starts to go out a little bit more into the rural parts of Queen Anne's County, and then gently, uh, your lower-tier projects. A lot of these are more of additional options for making connections between your towns, are more along your, I would say, um, roads that current cyclists are out using right now for recreational purposes, um, along higher-stress roads, that a facility would be great there when we're starting to think about trails and bicycle and pedestrian facilities as an attractor for tourism, as well as wanting people to move to Queen Anne's County because of the network. So the supporting next steps, we broke these down into five categories: education, promotion, funding, enforcement- funding, enforcement, and maintenance. And as I mentioned, these were softer recommendations. They weren't infrastructure. It was ideas of, we heard from a lot of people of having a, uh, same system of wayfinding signage when you start to think about your bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, allows people to know, how do I make that next connection, right? When you have that, um, that very clear system. Having things like a formal Bike to Work Day, um, which is, uh, coming up in about three weeks. So you might not have that for this year, but absolutely for 2025. Making sure that there are, um, are strategies to encourage people to start to use these facilities and know that you guys are, um, investing in these facilities to make sure that Queen Anne's County is really a great place to bike and walk and move. And then the funding, we just identified different types of grant strategies. We're very fortunate right now. There's a lot of grant opportunities out there that can fund these projects as they move from this planning stage into feasibility and then design and construction. Now it's not going to move. And then with that, um, we're within our time. Thank you very much. And we'll, we're having to answer any questions that y'all have. I'm going to give you the clicker back.
So, uh, that depends.
What was the question?
So, um, it's a, it's a matter of, next step would be funding a feasibility study to look at specific sections of the trail. If that's a top priority, that would be, you know, the commissioners would guide what our top priority is. Um, but it would be funding a feasibility study. At this point, we would take the concept in this plan and put it on the ground and look at a detailed route. What, how would we actually do it? How would we get there? Uh, where would the trail go? What land would we need? Where would we put a trail in existing right-of-way, and where would we need to get additional land? So the next step for all these trails is the feasibility. Uh, so that's really, this, this gives us a starting point. This outlines our public intent to do this. This is going to be an adopted public policy document that will help us secure funding, uh, and, and it'll be used to get grant money to go out, uh, to, to implement projects. So it really depends on.
They have given us access, though, right?
There's access, uh, across the golf course. Um, we have that, um, that easement already. So that is a, that is a plus, especially when you're coming from the other side of Gracerville into Queenstown and then working your way up this way. So that's one piece of the puzzle that's, you know, that's already taken care of. But as, you know, Kate and Steve both, both said, you know, each one of these routes is going to require a feasibility study. You know, just because you see it on paper going this way, you know, the feasibility study may make a different route, because it makes sense.
Because of land acquisitions or areas where ideally they would want to go, but there's always going to be a hiccup.
Well, um, we're, as soon as it's funded. Um, and we are pursuing grant funding, um, for different, um, as grant funding comes up. Um, but, you know, that, those things take time, and it, it really is a matter of when the money comes, comes, uh, is budgeted and put in place. Uh, we are trying to secure grant funds to be able to move forward with feasibility studies, um, and, uh, even requested federal earmarks, um, to try to move some projects forward.
You said that the, one, the top priority or, or one of the top priorities was the connectivity from the north side of Fifty to the south side of Fifty?
Yes.
pedestrian bike crossover.
I mean, we heard that repeatedly, but that's something that would also need to go to feasibility, right? That's a enormous effort.
I move to adopt the proposed two thousand, uh, twenty-four pedestrian and bicycle master plan proposed by Kimberly Horns.
Do we have a second?
Patrick's second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
It worked.
Thanks so much.
Actually have a proclamation to read.
Oh.
Yeah, that would be the proclamation. Uh, whereas, uh, so proclamation twenty-four dash fourteen, whereas Queen Anne's County, along with other, with others across the eastern shore in the great state of Maryland, are joining together to recognize and celebrate Trails Day, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. And whereas protecting the natural resources and beauty of Queen Anne's County is critical to our citizens' quality of life, health, economic well-being, and whereas the trails that span across our county are integral part of the recreational possibilities and connect our communities to one another to promote an enjoyment of area services and amenities, protect environmental resources and natural scenic beauty by residents and visitors alike. And whereas the parks, greenway, trails, natural areas, uh, across our county are welcome to all and provide a common ground for people of all ages to access our rich and diverse natural culture and historic resources. And whereas the county's trails vary in length and character, from the Cross Island Trail to the Corsica River Water Trail, from bikeways along abandoned railways, corridors, to paddle trails along the tributaries of the Chesapeake Bay, to trails through nature parks, the footpaths, and greenways through local neighborhoods. And whereas trails offer benefits to all residents as expression of local, community character and pride, as promoting healthy lifestyles, as, uh, conservation and open space providing opportunity for outdoor education, as tools for economic development, as accessible and alternative transportation, helping to reduce emissions from vehicles, and as sites for social and cultural events. And whereas Queen Anne's County is dedicated to plan, develop, and manage all types of trails and join our neighboring counties on the eastern shore to promote regional trail network from a, from the marshy shores of the Chesapeake Bay to the sands of Atlantic, of the Atlantic Ocean. Wouldn't that be great? Now therefore, we, the Queen Anne's County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh as Celebrate Trails Day in Queen Anne's County.
All right, commissioners, our final presentation this evening is item five on page thirty. Again, tab six, and I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McGlashan, Chief Property Manager, and Mr. Bill Duchet, Ken Island Estates Association Community President. So I'm going to let Dave, uh, tell us about this. Bill, all right?
Welcome.
Good evening.
Appreciate it. Well, as Todd mentioned, joining me is Mr. Bill Duchet, who is the president of Ken Island Estates, uh, Community Association. And, uh, what we are here for is for a check presentation. Um, as you may recall, during the Southern Ken Island Phase One Sewer Project, we had some vacant lots that were donated to the county, um, lots that were environmentally sensitive or very small, and people just didn't deem that they would be able to build on them. So they donated them for the tax write-off to the county. Um, service, sewer service was removed from these, and, uh, but what was decided, uh, ultimately was that, um, we would, we would surplus these lots. We did not need them for county purposes. So it was deemed that we would surplus them, and really the only, only value was to an adjacent property owner. So we sold these to adjacent property owners. With that being said, you voted on, uh, to give these monies back to the association, to the association, to the community of Ken Island Estates as those were, where the lots were located. Um, Bill, um, and Dick Sales and a handful of people have been, uh, great, great partners and, and a huge help to us in the Southern Ken Island Sewer, uh, project, as we all know, a huge undertaking. And, um, they've allowed us to use the community association numerous times for, for all kinds of community, um, meetings, informative meetings. So it was, they, they've been a great help to us, and Bill, I really want to thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So with that being said, Commissioner Corcarino instructed me to, uh, get a big check.
A big check.
Right. So that's, I don't know if that's big enough.
Before, yeah, I think also worth pointing out so that the public understands, so only, the only value really is to the adjacent landowners. So those adjacent landowners could have a bigger lot, but it can't be built on. So if you're just making someone's lawn bigger, you're not building any new houses, but then that property goes back on the tax rolls, so the county's getting tax revenue from it, and then the community is going to get a tremendous benefit, because we're turning the money back over from the sale to the community for them to have improvement for, for the kids of the, of the community. I think it's, uh, it was a great program all around, and a, and a really good way to get money back Ken Island Estates.
Is that more?
There may be some more.
Yeah, who knows?
There may be more.
We have no dues structure. Those are mandatory. So
Yeah.
we have to rely on residents who are willing to pay their membership fee.
Yeah.
So go a long way to do some. Neighborhood was not set up the best back in the, in the fifties when they, when they did that. Yeah.
I think you had mentioned about some potential.
Well, we got, uh, we have the Beach Association, and the issues we're having with the beach off of Oregon and Bay, where it's eroding, and you're familiar with the Rick Raps project, which is kind of causing some things. And then, of course, uh, we don't have any rec space in Queen, in Ken Island Estates. It was never established. Uh, we have this little beach area off of Queen Anne, and, uh, we have our community hall, but residents can't go anywhere else to have open space. They have to go up to North County, which I think I may have called you a while ago. Is there a way we can have space down in Ken Island Estates? I think we're the largest community on the island. It's eight hundred and twenty-nine homes, I think is the count. And, uh, so it's a large community, and there's a lot of people down there. And you should see that trail, how it's used.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's used a lot.
Yep.
And, uh, and you've got the Demon Trail, the Horse Trail off to the side. It'd be nice to have some open space down that way, so our residents don't have to travel to the north side of the county just to find a ball field or things like that. We're going to use the money well to do some infrastructure improvements that we just don't have the money just to raise. Here, we can do some stuff right-of-way. So it'll come in handy.
Do the presentation, will you?
Picture with the check.
That's right. That's a good time.
That's right.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say.
We spelled Junaid wrong, I'm sorry.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say Maryland law. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Not giving a little one.
Yeah, you might want to try.
All right, commissioners, that is all of the presentations we have this evening. Uh, we have two pieces of legislation for consideration tonight. If you want to turn to tab number seven. Okay, so, uh, tab number seven, pages one through five, is County Ordinance Number Twenty-four dash zero-nine, Short-Term Rentals. And this is a bill for the purpose of regulating short-term rentals in Queen Anne's County, revising certain definitions, and adding a definition of short-term rentals in Chapter Eighteen of the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. Um, this was prepared by our, uh, Department of Planning and Zoning, and it is recommended that we send this back to the Planning Commission for investigation and recommendation back to the county.
I move to convey County Ordinance Twenty-four dash zero-nine to the Planning Commission for Investigation and Recommendations.
Second.
Is it just a?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just abstain for right now.
One abstention.
Ready?
One abstention. Oh, and also, it's a little late in the game. Commissioner Wilson is out feeling ill today, so he couldn't make it tonight. All righty. Moving on.
Okay. Uh, our next item under legislation, tab seven, pages six and seven, this is County Ordinance Twenty-four, Twenty-four-ten. This is, uh, for the purpose of eliminating the provision that the executive assistant and deputy executive assistant to the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County shall serve at the pleasure of making such positions merit system employees, and this would be, uh, sub, uh, available for introduction for republic.
Introduced.
All right, that is all the legislation we have for this evening, commissioners. Now we can move into the Department of Public Works. They have, uh, two items. So if you want to, uh, flip to tab two. So tab two, item one, uh, under Administration and Engineering, item one on pages one and three. And this is the annual cooperative agreement between the, uh, County and Maryland Department of the Agriculture for the Control and Eradication of Noxious and Certain Invasive Weeds for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I move to approve the FY twenty-twenty-five Noxious Weed Cooperative Agreement with the Maryland Department of Agriculture.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McGlashan. Get those weeds eradicated, please. Yeah, all right. All right, commissioners, our second item for public works is for the Sanitary Commission. So would you please?
Pushing to go into sanitary?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Matt Lucas, our chief sanitary engineer.
Matt, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
All right. So this is a request for sewer and water allocation for the Bay Bridge Marina property.
I move to grant, uh, seven thousand and eight gallons per day of sewer and water allocation to the Bay Bridge Marina LLLP for their proposed twenty-eight townhomes and thirty-two-room hotel at a cost of four hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars, for which a ten percent non-refundable deposit will be required within thirty days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
Um, we have the allocation.
Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Matt, well done. First, first appearance here for the commissioners.
Matt. Stay longer.
You knocked it out of the park.
All right, commissioners, uh, we can move into the, uh, regular action items. Uh, tab number three. We've got three additional action items tonight.
Phil ordered the first one.
Uh, tab, yeah, tab three, item one. Commissioner Dumanell covered the Celebration Trails Day.
All right.
Uh, item two, page two, this is National Public Safety Dispatchers Week, Proclamation Twenty-four dash sixteen. Uh, proclamation twenty-four dash sixteen, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical, and whereas the public safety dispatchers are not visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, but provide a vital link to the public safety services as part of the first responder team. Each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Whereas the public safety dispatchers are critical to our county's emergency response and homeland security services, dispatching law enforcement, emergency medical services, firefighters, and other emergency responders twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and medical responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens and visitors who contact the Queen Anne's County Communications Center. And whereas the professional public safety dispatchers are a vital link between citizens and victims, and the first and foremost critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas the public safety dispatchers serve as the single most vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Therefore, be it resolved that the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County declare the week of April fourteenth through twenty, twenty-twenty-four, it be the National Public Safety Dispatcher Week in Queen Anne's County in honor of the men and women who diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Signed by all of the county commissioners.
Very well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Corcarino. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we have item number three, the Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement. Item three on pages three through forty-nine. And I believe, uh, on the screen here on our Zoom, we also have, uh, a representative from CBG Communications and Co. and Law Group, uh, the firms, firms that have assisted the county in negotiating this proposed cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Del Marva. The agreement is designed to maintain competitive equity with the incumbent cable provider, Breeze Line, while at the same time enabling the new operator to enter Queen Anne's County's marketplace and establish- Queen Anne's County's marketplace and establish viable cable competition. Uh, this has been, um, under, in process now for many months, and we believe that this agreement provides proper balance to ensure both providers can engage in fair and effective competition. So, um.
I move to conditionally approve the cable franchise agreement with Comcast of Delmarva LLC, the conditions being the submission of all necessary insurance certificates, performance bond, and the final counter signature by Comcast of Delmarva.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion on this?
Any questions for Mr. Robinson at all tonight?
How many houses are you gonna touch roughly?
We, there's a service area map, uh, proposed service area map in the, um, in the packet. Generally, um, they're coming from the Denton area. They're coming up.
Last page.
Yeah, the last page. They're primarily, the service area is gonna be Kent Island and the Graysonville area. And then they have requirements to expand that to other areas of the county, but that's gonna be their primary build area. And they are underway now. We've issued a number of permits. I believe they're in Commissioner Moran's, uh, neighborhood, uh, right now.
They're in mine.
They're on Bennett Point Road. They're going down Bennett Point Road now.
They initially were gonna be, told us they were gonna be pretty aggressive, but, um, things haven't, um, been as, as aggressive as we initially thought, but I, nonetheless, they are moving forward with their, uh, expansion of services.
Aggressive to some.
Joe, is there, is there, um, kind of a forecast of how many users you anticipate, uh, will, will, uh, come on board with your services?
As far as, uh, total number?
Best guess?
Um, we have to, we have to take a look at the, uh, at the area that they set up as the initial build, but it's, um, pretty much the entirety of Kent Island and then moving towards Graysonville, um, as part of the initial build. So, um, it's, it's a substantial number of homes. I have to go back and see where the actual town is.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're going, they're gonna offer it to everybody in, within the, that, you know, that service area map. Everybody inside of those red lines will have access to Comcast. So, so now it's.
Within a certain period of time.
Correct.
Sure.
Uh, it did, uh, before it started the process. So, um, we anticipated and initially we, um, uh, set up the schedule so that it's on the outside when it actually completed. Um, but it's a thirty-six month build and it's likely that it'll be completed faster. Comcast moves pretty quick.
We're going from one choice to three choices. So that's.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
What the public needs and wants. So that's a good.
Just wanna give a shout out to Megan Delgado and her leadership on the whole broadband. Um, and, and her board, her, her team that's working with her. They've done a great job.
Okay.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you being online tonight and being, uh, as patient as you have been, uh, waiting for this, uh, presentation piece. So thank you very much.
Your computer is here.
All right, Commissioners, uh, our final item is item number four on pages fifty through sixty-four. This is a bit of a housekeeping item, uh, but at, in the March meeting, uh, the Commissioners, um, approved, uh, the, um, Long Driveway Grant Program to, to add another million dollars to that program, uh, to secure a one point one million dollar state grant. Uh, this agreement here before you is between the county and the Department of Housing and Community Services. Essentially, we'll secure those grant dollars for that program going forward.
I move to approve and execute a stretch difficult to serve our fees program grant amendment. Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, Commissioners, that is all of the action items this evening. Uh, next up, I suppose we can do, uh, press and public comment. If there's anybody.
Anybody online?
I've got nothing virtual, but we did have one email that came in, uh, on Sunday. Would you like me to read that?
Absolutely.
Go for it. Um, this is from Ronnie Bennett. Uh, he does not say where he is from. He reads, "Once again, Kent Island residents are being punished for living here. Vacation commuters dealt a better hand. Why can't locals get a local sticker and use our roads the way they were designed? Why punish us and make local go a mile east to sit in traffic heading east for thirty minutes? This is completely obscured and totally in favor of people on vacation. We live here." Uh, that's it. That's all we have.
Very good. All right, we'll go right to roundtable. Uh, Patrick, you wanna go first?
Glad to be here.
How do you, I, I feel for you. I got those issues.
I need to hear what happened at the college and at the, uh, Wednesday. I still don't know. But, uh, I was just saddened by the, the Kent Island High School kid. Now, he's, he's a graduate and boom, you know? It, it, he took something, from what I understand, it was laced with something, right? And, you know, smoke a joint or you, you take an upper and it's got something in it and you're toast. So my prayers go out to his family.
Absolutely.
Hey, big boy.
Very important, very important point, Commissioner. Thank you for making it. Um, on a happier note, uh, I had mentioned, um, at our last Commissioners' meeting that I would be attending the Ken Island Little League Youth Baseball and Softball Opening Day ceremonies. And it was, uh, a great success. Uh, it was great seeing the kids marching in the parade. Um, and despite the cooler weather, uh, we still had a fair amount of folks that came out to cheer the kids on. Uh, and it was a great day of baseball. Um, if anybody's interested in, uh, becoming an umpire, has some experience, I know we're looking for some umpires to officiate these games. It's a shame that, um, that there's a shortage of umpires. Uh, there's a couple of different reasons for it. Um, but I have to honestly say from my own personal experience that officiating or umpiring here in Queen Anne's County over the years, uh, the citizens and coaches have always been very, very respectful. So if you're looking to get into umpiring, don't let the fact that you, there are rumors that there are parents or coaches that are, uh, disrespectful. It's not true. We have great coaches and great parents, and they're very, very grateful and thankful for the umpires that are willing, uh, to put in the work. Um, so great success for that. Um, and then, uh, one other issue, um, we generally meet, uh, in closed session to go over boards and commissions. And we have folks out there that are, that wanna get involved in their community, not sure how, how they can do that, uh, or what their options and opportunities are. We have several different commissions that, that, uh, are manned by citizens in Queen Anne's County. Uh, Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission, uh, the Bay Bridge Airport Advisory Commission, Blue Hair and Golf Course Advisory Commission, Board of Electrical Examiners, Department of Emergency Services Advisory Council, Housing Authority, Board of Licensed Commissioners, our Liquor Board, Social Services Board, and our Personnel Board. There's lots of opportunities for our citizens to get involved. If you want to get more information, you can reach out to the County Commissioners' office. If you have any questions about what boards we have and openings and how you can apply.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Phil, for that. I appreciate you giving people the update on how they can
be involved. I think some people thought that the involvement was going on to social media and criticizing things and not being productive, but evidently there is a way to be productive.
Yes, there is.
In the county too. That is very interesting. I was not aware of that.
Wow.
So that's good, but we, we hear a lot of about. And I tell you, any donkey can dock out a barn, but it takes a cooperative to build one.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, I think, you know, it would be helpful for people to be contributing towards, towards their community. There are lots of ways to do it. There's a lot of people who do, whether you're involved in the PTA, whether you're involved in the athletic boosters, whether you're on a county community, lots of opportunities to get involved, and also lots of ways to inform yourself on what's going on in the county.
Yes, and that's what I was gonna say. There's a, there's an advantage to being involved in these boards and commissions because you get to see the, the factual information and the data that we actually base decisions on.
Right.
And so it's an educational opportunity for you to find out how things work in our community.
Right. And so we had a, an email that was just read about why can't we just do a sticker and allow locals to use the access? Um, I, I'm trying not to be too sarcastic on here, but we've, like, answered that question about a million times. We have, uh, multiple times in these meetings addressed that. Jim and I did a video that was put out on Q C T V.
Answered that question.
It was re, re-put on Q A C T V.
Wanna answer it one more time?
Okay, so you can't treat two different, you know, you can't treat somebody from Anaronna County different than someone from Queen Anne's County. They all pay the taxes for the state roads. So if an exit is closed to one, it's closed to all. We can't do a locals only. It is not allowed. There is a letter that the, uh, M- Maryland Department of Transportation received from Federal Highway that said, "If you, um, can't, uh, i- if you were to restrict a lane based on residency, then the Federal Highway will not give any more money to the state for the state projects." We've had people who suggest that Queen Anne's County could just pick up that deficit of the Federal Highway money for the state. I haven't got an exact number. It's around one point two billion, I think, probably annually when you look at roads and everything else. Um, our budget's a little bit lower than that, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that. Um, we, we are, we're a small county. Uh, there are a lot of people who've moved here recently. Like fifty thousand people in this county. Like, our budget is probably, you know, much smaller than the budgets of a lot of departments from where people have moved here from, right? So they're used to places that have, you know, billions and billions of dollars worth of budgets. That's not Queen Anne's County. We, we have limited resources. And so one of the things we have to do is say, "How do we disperse those resources in a way that we can best impact all citizens' lives in a positive way?" Um, and so some, some things we can do, some things we can't do. It's a balancing act. Um, to get more information on the things that we talk about, you can watch this meeting, Q A C T V. You can watch it on, uh, Q A Steve has YouTube channel. It's on Facebook. Uh, Queen Anne's County has a website, qac.org backslash one four five backslash sign dash up dash four, the word four F O R. And you can sign up for email notifications for emergencies, events, news updates, and we push out all the information. You'll have, you'll get a news update of the commission meetings coming up. It's gonna have the agenda. It's gonna have the materials that the commissioners will be talking about at the agenda. Days in advance of, of our meeting, so you know what we talk about. You can show up. If you can't come to a meeting in person, you can zoom into the meetings. We've had some people do it today. We moved these meetings when we all started two terms ago to at night. So the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, we have these meetings at night, specifically at night, so that citizens would be able to come. And so it wasn't during the workday. Uh, so we've tried a lot of things to really put out the information. You don't have the ability to watch a commissioner meeting. You can download it on your podcast app and you can listen to it on your way into work. So that information, um, is out there. Um, on the, uh, the Beach to Bridge Plan, if you were to Google Beach to Bridge, Queen Anne's County, you'll see, uh, news articles, TV reports going back years. You'll see letters that we have sent to M D O T, response letters back to M D O T. You'll see information from when we all went down to the General Assembly to testify to try to get some laws changed on road access. Um, long history of, of what we have tried to do to mitigate the impact, um, of beach traffic. And so I, I understand the, the email that we got. We have a lot of people who feel that somehow locals are being punished. It's the opposite. Uh, we are, we are trying to help locals, uh, with the, managing the ramps. And it's, you know, obvi- it's not ideal, but we have geographic and infrastructure constraints, um, that impact us. We can't just build another road the length of Kent Island. We simply don't have that kind of money in Queen Anne's County. That's just, that, that's not the money that we have. So we're trying to say, "What can we do, uh, to make these things work?" Um, and I think this is a, a good plan. And after running the pilot again, you know, maybe the results come in and it doesn't work. Maybe, maybe the impact is not worth it, um, in which case we'll have to retool and maybe do something else. But we gotta try things, and we've been trying things. Um, the state has been trying things, metering traffic. All these things are happening, but the traffic continues to increase. Uh, there is a book out called, um, Y Island, which talks about when James Rouse, who built Columbia, wanted to build a version of Columbia on Y Island, and the locals came out and they, they stopped it, right? This book was published in the seventies. And if you read it, it talks about the traffic jams on Kent Island and how it inhibited all of the residents from getting around during the beach season. This ain't nothing new, right? This has been a problem for a long time. And along the way, things have been done. Another bridge was built. That helped. The traffic kept increasing. We put overpasses on the Kent Island. That helped, but the traffic kept increasing. We got rid of the, having the Jaw Bridge only at Canton Arrows. That helped, but traffic kept increasing. We're probably old enough to remember when you would go to Ocean City and you had the old, old bridge on the Chop Tank River going into, uh, into Cambridge. We remember you used to have to drive through downtown Salisbury before the overpass, right? To get through, in Vienna, right? So lots of things have been done, but the shore has just boomed, boomed with development. Um, and people like to go down there and they like to have second homes there. And that's the traffic that we're finding, and it's gonna keep growing. Whether we build one more house on Ken Island or not, the traffic at the beach is gonna keep growing. And that is the problem that we're trying to figure out ways to, both short term and long term. Um, so a lot of information has gone into these things, consulting with engineers who their specialty is traffic engineering and maintenance of traffic, and how do you try to get traffic flowing? Um, and that's who we're relying on for a lot of expertise in doing these things. Um, and so I thought, I thought Town Hall overall was a very, uh, productive meeting because we were able to explain some of these things, get a lot of input. Um, you know, some people obviously didn't leave happy, but there were several who said, "Look, I, I understand this a lot better now. Understand the implications of what, why we're doing this." Um, and that was the real point of the Town Hall, was to, you know, provide another way of getting information out there. Uh, that meeting, um, we'll have it up on Q A C T V, so those who couldn't make it can watch it. There'll be two different versions of it, the full one, and then more condensed one. That's gonna just sort of hit the highlights. So if you're just trying to get through it quicker because it was a long meeting, um, that'll be some more information out there. But I encourage anybody that wants some more information, sign up for the email blast. Um, look at the, uh, the agenda for Commissioners' meeting. You can see what's coming up. And there is a lot of information out there for you, um, to know about what's going on in your county. We're extremely transparent. All the documents are available. Or you could call any of us up and we return calls all week long to anybody who, uh, who reaches out to us. Um, if you've reached out and we didn't get back to you, try again. It wasn't intentional. Um, we get a lot of people who reach out. We do our best to respond to everybody. Not always perfect. Um, what's county staff who's available? If anybody has questions? I mean, we just, there is a lot of information out there for you. So I'm gonna jump down off my soapbox now. Um, but I just, it's, it's very important that we point out how much information is out there for the public to, to learn about what we've done on this long process to get here.
You know, when it comes to the Bay Bridge, that's, it's a big soapbox. It'll hold three or four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There you fret. So, well, uh, I will say that, uh, and we're gonna, I'm back on the same soapbox. Uh, last Friday, uh, I, I chaired the Baltimore Metropolitan Council Meeting, and the Coast Guard came in and the topic was the Francis Scott Key Bridge. Uh, and, and one of the, you know, they talked about what they're doing and how they're removing the, the old bridge, getting the channel open. And, uh, Secretary Widerfeld was there. And I asked him, I said, you know, "I'm curious, does the Francis Scott Key Bridge have to go through an EVA?" And he said, "No, it does not." Uh, it's not adding capacity, supposedly two lanes in each direction, and it's going pretty much where it is now. So they're not gonna have to do an EVA. So people might wanna get used to the fact that that bridge will be built before anything happens to the Chesapeake Bay Bridges. That's number one. Number two, last night, the first panels, first panel was removed and replaced on the Bay Bridge redecking, finally. Uh, it was supposed to have started last November, I think November or October, they were supposed to start, and just, they had some delays, you know, some supply issues and s- some design, uh, I guess, issues, uh, with their mixed designs. But long story short, uh, a lot of us got notices saying, "Hey, be prepared. Tuesday morning, your commute might be longer because, you know, if something goes wrong, they, they're gonna keep the bridge closed." So they got it right. Uh, the bridge was open. Everything went well. Uh, looking forward to them tonight, replacing another one. Bad weather or wind will, will prohibit them from moving forward. But, uh, they're ahead with the under, under the side of the bridge, you know, moving electrical and, and other utilities and getting preparing. So, you know, I'm hoping this'll, every night, they'll be popping a new panel in and, uh, we'll get this project moving and done.
What's the forecast, uh, for completion?
Well, this, this is phase one. Uh, and it was twenty twenty-five, I think, this spring of twenty twenty-five. So they got a whole other year.
Two years.
Yeah. Uh, so, and, and the state is notorious for underpromising and overachieving. So I, I look forward to them to be done, you know, with that phase. Uh, phase two has still not been funded. I believe, uh, they're working on the funding for phase two, which is from the top of the span going down around the curve, uh, I believe was phase two. So there's four phases with the project, uh, well over a billion dollars for all of them. So, you know, I, I question the fact that you spend a billion dollars only to tear it down four or five years later. So maybe that bridge stays? I don't know. I don't wanna speculate on that, but, you know, and, and again, you know, Chris addressed the email we got tonight. I, the part that tuned me in was, you know, the thirty minutes going one mile. I, I- The part that tuned me in was, you know, the thirty minutes going one mile, I, I kind of questioned that, too. And Chris and I are going to be putting our, you know, our traveling shoes on, and we're going to go live from inside of a vehicle, and we're going to get in that traffic. So when we close that ramp down, we might take three or four passes at it in different times and different, you know, congestion scenarios, because we want to know exactly how long it's going to take, so, you know, we'll be prepared, prepared for that.
And you'll be wearing the proper attire?